Please silence all of your electronic equipment. And I apologize if I'm kind of hesitating because this hearing myself is annoying. I'm going to call this workshop to order. A few things before we get started. This is a continuation of the original workshop for the Beck property dated May the 22nd. The rules for this evening, because this is a workshop, there is no public comment. You will be able, allowed to comment at the June 6th council meeting during the citizens' comments section. At that meeting, we may be scheduling a combined public hearing. It all depends on timing and where everyone is, what date we can find. Thank you for turning. Can everybody hear me okay though when they turn it down? Okay, so the procedure this evening is that the developer and his representative will speak for approximately 15, 20 minutes. Each council member has prepared questions and will be taking about seven minutes to speak. At the end of that, we will have a wrap-up. And then the meeting will adjourn at 9 o'clock. So without any further, we will get started. Ron?
Thank you. Ron Thompson, Van Mar Associates. With me is the developer Craig Kazangian of Cas Brothers. It's a 90-acre parcel divided between Route 27. And we'll just quickly go over the plans because we'll be coming back to them, but just a brief overview in that, a couple of things based upon the previous comments. We've brought the municipal parcel forward towards the front of Center Street near the site.
Can we have some of these lights off so we can, so the public can see that a little bit better? We go to a facility where, you know, we can fit everybody in and you're comfortable and then we don't have the ability to have what we have at, there we go, at Town Hall. So I apologize.
Thank you. So we've brought the municipal parcel forward. Right now, we're showing a building that you can fit in there of approximately 13,000 square feet with parking. We've also shown our well, potential well sites on the plans based on preliminary testing back here. We've continued with single-family housing adjacent to the existing neighborhoods. We've also provided a pedestrian connection, eight-foot trail back to, from the development, back into the rail-to-trail along here. And also are showing a potential, there's an easement there, rails-to-trail connection from Park Avenue all the way back into the development leading to the commercial center. And there's a connection at the end of, can't read it from here, Carroll Avenue also where people then can access using bikes or walking as opposed to getting in a car and driving to the development. Again, we've got some, a mixture of housing units, single-family, townhomes, and two apartments there too, for a total of, and we'll go through the numbers here in a few minutes. We also have, are proposing a continuation of the commercial center, approximately 103,000 square feet of commercial space there. A variety of space with that.
Ron, can I, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you one. If you were sitting next to an empty chair, would you please raise your hand? Because there's people sitting around, I just.
Roxanne, there's also a rack in the back that has additional chairs that they can take off and sit down.
Okay, there is a rack of chairs in the back. If you'd like to take one off and sit in it, that's fine. Okay. Continue, thank you.
And our design also provides what we consider a transition from existing or surrounding into the mixed-use development. We have townhomes along the park rail-to-trail as opposed to commercial space, part, large parking lots with, and the same along the swim club off of Ridge Road, off of Beck Drive. And again, the other feature that we have continued to show is a village green, a gathering space that can be easily accessed by all, either from walking through the commercial center over, potential for the town to be holding additional events at that location. It is 1.8 acres, fairly significant parcel. We have townhomes fronting on it along the centerpiece. The townhomes have rear-load access, large lawn in between alleyways, and along the perimeter, we have front-loaded townhomes. So if we move to, and again, it also includes the Center Street, completion of that as a connection, and also the connection of Beck Drive and through to the back. And again, one of the comments from the municipal and from the police department is the ability to have direct access out onto Center Street, which this concept now provides with a street on each side of the municipal parcel. If we move to the east, comment came back, density too great, you weren't, you were ignoring the contours, and save the trees primarily were the comments. Again, this continues with the extension of Century Boulevard out and then connecting with the extension of Century Drive back to Route 27. We've redesigned it where along the lower end of the parcel, we have single-family housing in a more, not linear form, but neighborhood conducive type of environment. We have through the middle retaining the forest area, retaining the forest area along the edges, retaining the forest area along the rear. And there is a wood line along the back of the lots against where the future Century, Center Street extension would be. Those woods would be retained also as a buffer. Again, there's a wood buffer along between the development and the shopping center. And we've shown the existing woods, which ends right here on the property. And I've shown, because that seemed to be a question, are we taking the woods along Route 27? We are not. So they are also shown on this plan, again, as a buffer. Up near the intersect, near the Center Street extension, we've included a park area with a U-12 soccer field and multi-function court, basketball, pickleball, whatever in that. In addition, it has its own parking. And one of the comments that came back is, we're offering the opportunity of a connection to the church because when you extend Center Street through the intersection, that could potentially become congested. So now they have an additional way out of their church property. And then would come down and be able to access, it's about 700 feet away from the intersection. And that's set at that location. We have a row of houses, but we started to get into steep slopes and we stay out of that for it. This portion is a series of townhomes. And again, we have two apartment buildings at the end of the development near the shopping center down at this location. We'll go over this area. In the past, we talked about a potential area. Right now, it's open, but I'm counting it as potentially for stormwater management, the surface sand filter type of facility for it. We've maintained, can't quite see it, but the town has an access driveway up to the well, the tank, that remains in this concept. So with that, John, if we could go to the slide presentation, and we do have handouts for the members here to summarize this. So with that. I was worried for a minute.
This will also be put on the town website as well.
So next slide, John. We wanted to go through a little bit, pulling together the history and relating it to the code. And the Mount Airy Vision Plan. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. Get it up. The Mount Airy Vision Plan listed some project goals, which we have tried to follow in the development of our concept. The first was to maximize Center Street potential as an eastern portal to the downtown. Create a presence along Route 27 with the extension of Center Street, providing a direct connection to Main Street. And with this, Mount Airy would have the unique opportunity to establish its identity and announce events at this new entry point into the town. Provide a mixed-use, walkable center district distinct from but respectful of the downtown, providing a location for larger commercial uses that cannot be accommodated within the smaller area of the downtown core and require more higher visibility to more vehicles. Again, this plan does do that with the addition of our trails, walkability from the residential into the commercial with the residential surrounding the commercial. Expand the residential opportunities of Mount Airy, providing a variety of residential types, single-family homes, a variety of sizes of townhomes, apartments. Next slide. Trying to be respectful of your time here.
Thank you.
Sorry to be rushing. The elements of a pre-concept sketch layout plan that are listed in the code in which you as planning commission and town council are to be reviewing are the preliminary layout of the project with the proposed setting of a maximum density. When we move through a concept plan, that density will potentially decrease as we lay out additional features of the site. But again, this is pre-concept, not concept into finals. You look at the number and approximate location of the proposed residential units, the approximate location and square footage of the commercial space, the proposed dwelling unit types, the proposed mixed-use ratio of residential to commercial uses, the general locations of the proposed roadway plan, general location of parking, our stormwater management approach, open space, water and sewer allocation requirements. Those are the criteria of which you are judging the pre-concept sketch plan on. Next slide. When we look at the MXD objectives, provide a more attractive residential, non-residential development than what would be possible through strict application of zoning. The strict application previously was a community commercial site. All commercial, could be large box. Here, we've satisfied that objective with a mixture of single-family, townhome, and apartment residential units with commercial space instead of just commercial zoning only. And again, our mixed-use development is a horizontal mixed-use development, not a vertical mixed-use development that some people think of. We are not, what came through loud and clear in the development of this code was you're not looking at downtown Gaithersburg or some of the others where they build 12-story mixed-use apartments with, around commercial. Encourage a harmonious coordinated development that is consistent with the existing features, bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicular circulation with surrounding uses. Again, we believe this objective is satisfied with our street pattern, connection to the existing neighborhoods, including trail connections, and the design has been revised to more closely align with existing contours as best as possible to preserve wooded areas. Next slide, John. Another objective is encourage development that is of excellent design and architecture with a mix of uses that will create synergy, efficiency of design, and a reduction of vehicle miles traveled. This objective is mostly evaluated at the pattern book stage where we provide architectural elevations and other elements of streetscape. However, we are including bicycle connections as an alternative to requiring everybody to drive to the site, wider sidewalks along Center Street to encourage pedestrian activities, whether it's a sidewalk café, outside shopping, whatever that you normally would associate with that type of development on a major street. Create a mixture of office, retail, recreational, and residential uses along with restaurants, eateries, and cafés. Where all our related structures, parking, and open spaces are designed to establish and maintain a cohesive community while protecting the character of surrounding neighborhoods. Again, we believe this objective is satisfied with a mixture of development and transition of units protecting the character of the surrounding units. Expand the opportunity to support diversified housing options with an integrated site design of varying land uses. Again, we believe this is satisfied with our mixture of single-family homes, townhomes, and apartments mixed in the residential space. And then finally, encourage development of sites that promote and support a diverse artistic and if possible, entertainment area that creates a community with live-work space for artists. Evaluated at the pattern book, our live-work opportunities are provided by building a downtown network of community-type commercial space adjacent to the residential. What are the contributions or commonly called proffers to the town that will, the developer will be providing in any type of design? That includes committing, completing Center Street, Center Street connection to Century Boulevard, completing the Century Boulevard extension, intersection improvements at Route 27 Center Street. There's local infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, municipal parcel along, on Center Street, new water wells, water supply, open space. We highlighted the recreation park with a soccer field and multi-sports court and a village green gathering space in the middle of Beck West MXD. Next slide. Stormwater management that we will be using will include dry wells on individual residential lots, microbioretention facilities, again, these are surface landscape, smaller type of facilities, usually with bark mulch surface with plants in them, permeable pavement in the commercial parking lots. I talked about the surface sand filter at the lower end of Beck East and potentially underground storage under the parking, commercial space parking lot for stormwater management. What's our building program? Well, for Beck West, 27 resident, single-family homes, 125 townhomes, 90 apartments. For Beck East, single-family, 70, single-family townhomes, 186 apartments, 90. Total dwelling units, 588. We have a residential-commercial area mix, 75, 25. Again, this is a reduction of the previous of over, about 16 percent. Before, we were over 700 dwelling units in the previous concept. Project elements, I will continue to talk over the background noise.
Sorry.
The project elements include recreational park, soccer field, multi-sport court, village green proposed, we talked about 1. acres. Open space requirement is 10 percent, which is 9.1 acres. Right now, the pre-concept open space is showing 19.7 acres. And the pre-concept east wood tree save area is approximately eight acres. Next slide. Water and sewer allocation. Our estimated water and sewer allocation is around a little over 108,000 gallons per day with the proposed development that we are showing. We're showing, we've shown on the plan a comment from the last workshop, want to see where the potential well sites are located. They are shown on the plan. We have a minimum potential of 165,000 gallons per day, up to 200,000 gallons per day. Again, that is a very initial projection. When we move into the concept design, we would have to do detailed testing in order to determine what that final yield could be presented to MDE. Next slide. We've reviewed the, I switched the order to show the plans first. And Madam Chair, unless Craig wants to add anything, that would conclude our initial presentation.
Just like to say that we took the.
I think you need to talk louder because I don't think everybody can hear you.
From the last workshop, obviously comments were the density on the east side, we brought that down. The tree save, we shifted open spaces to save more trees, create more space, open space that is not just open, but usable with the village green, soccer field, the multi-sport court. Transfer the municipal building to the desired location and provide a variety of products to reduce the amount of parking. Get rid of the commercial parking near rails to trails. These were the main comments that we got, or that we got last work session that we made an effort to put into this one. You can see there's a significant tree save from last time. The soccer field is, and the village green, we look at as a great community spot to hold events for Mount Airy. So we are listening to everything you're giving us. We're putting it into various iterations of the plan. And then we take those iterations of the plan, we run it through consultants and our own internal, talking to builders, developers, traffic consultants, everyone that we have on the team to make sure that we can make work what we're showing. So we've taken your first round of comments, put them as best we can into something that we know will work. And we'd like to hear your comments on this next round. We'd like to get it to you next time a little earlier, but we are working every day on it. From there, I'll take your comments.
Thank you. So what I'll do is I'll start to my left. Carl, and we'll just start with Carl and come this way.
All right, Roxanne. First off, I'd like to say, I think you heard me earlier at the beginning that Councilman Poyor has emailed me his questions. So I will start off with them. Unfortunately, he had prior engagement to attend to this evening, so he does send his apologies to the crowd for not being here, but he has sent me questions, if I can find them in my piles of paper here. Here they are, at the bottom. So I'll start off with his. First and foremost, thank you for listening to everyone's comments and suggestions on the last workshop and incorporating many changes that were suggested by town staff and the residents into your plan. But here are the five questions. Is the developer still set on completing both sections at the same time? I guess he's looking for an answer on that one right now, if you have one. If not, that's fine also.
I think that this is an overall important thing to consider, just in general. We're at pre-concept. We have three more years of planning and permits and then five years of build-out. I mean, the entire thing, we're talking about, and this is important just on, it hits a bigger point. This is a large project. It has a lot of people, it has a lot of change, but it's happening over a decade and it will.
Ladies and gentlemen of the, I want to say jury, but that's the wrong type of thing.
Audience.
Audience, thank you, Councilwoman. Please keep the comments quiet, please, because, yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So my point is, this is happening over a decade.
Yeah.
And so spread out over a decade, it is growth, but it is also growth that takes the town into the subsequent decades. This is a large project over a large time span. To say it's all built at once, both sides at once, it's still, is going to take.
Yeah, I think, I think what he was saying is like, would they be consecutive, would you be doing both sides consecutively or one at a time, I guess?
I think it would determine, be determined later on, and quite frankly, in the developer's agreement, there are things that are set forward. For instance, priorities that the town has to be constructed first, could be Center Street. And each one of those brings to the developer how they have to balance that investment in the public infrastructure versus creating users of that.
Right. And that's the thing is, we'll discuss, and the DRA will set a schedule of milestones.
Okay.
But it's a chicken and egg. You can't have the commercial without the residential to support it. And how does that flow? And what kind of time schedule is that on is something that we have to create in the DRA.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm not accused by him for not sending, do, saying all these questions. Let me do a follow-up here. If the developers, I think you might have answered this, but I'll just say it. If the developers is, will, to only, is only going to complete one section at a time, what would be the timeframe to complete the other section? But it sounds like you kind of indicated it's going to depend on various factors. Question two, will the residential component of the developments fall under an HOA or will the communities run HOA-free?
I would assume that there would be multiple HOAs, probably something on the west side, east side, west side. And it might even be broken down into the different groups of towns, singles, apartments. I would, I would expect HOAs.
Okay. Number three, there's a total of five, so I'm going down. Will the open spaces be developed with playgrounds or will there simply, or will there simply be green space community? I guess I was looking if there's.
No.
The green spaces will have playgrounds or just like open area?
No, so we're showing the soccer field, the multi-sport courts. The village green, right now, we're just representing with grass and hardscape, but during the pattern book, that's an opportunity to build something in the center of town that can be used for events that the town is known for their events and festivals, parades, markets. It's, right now, it's just a placeholder of an illustrative, but that will expand as we go through the planning process.
All right. Number four, are you open to villas on both east and west to break up the monotony of the townhomes, townhouses?
Villas.
Like what I suggested for the green tree, like you'll see the, what I would say, the old-fashioned duplexes or triplexes would give a potential option for an age-in-place type without the steps or a larger.
I think.
First-floor master suite and things of that.
I think those things are on, on the table. Right now, we're just establishing density and unit count. Whether those units change to different style units, that is always on the table.
All right. Number five is, he is still looking for more wooded areas, especially, especially around the water tank. He says, for example, the 12-town homes, townhouses to the north of the water tower make that the entire lot a wooded area. So I guess the 12 lots north of where the trees are existing.
Understood.
Okay. I just, so that concludes his questions. So I'll just only have a question due to the fact that this was, you know, unfortunately, not much time was given us to review, but to kind of go along with some of his things. But I'm more concerned quite. But I'm more concerned, questions too, is during the last, first off, thank you for incorporating the, some of the considerations that comments made during the last workshop. To me, the density on the east side is still a little bit, what I would classify as congested. Not sure, and quite frankly, I'm not sure why the apartment buildings appeared on the east side. I don't believe that was even discussed at the last. The only thing that was discussed, changes in commercial for the east side was a potential daycare site. So I would like to see those removed, is the best way to describe that. They could be converted to open space trees, things of that nature, maybe a row of townhomes or something, but convert a lot of that maybe to trees, to tree spaces. I'm also concerned, as Council President Poyer indicated in his questioning, the, I want to say, the monotony of townhomes. I know the code of the MXD does not state a max number of units per block is the best way to describe it. But I would like to see the max number somewhere in the five to six range per block of townhomes. And also, I would like to see potential for some villas there also. I'll let the other ones have their questions and things of that nature. So that concludes my time.
Okay, so first I want to say thank you for listening to the public because I think you've taken into consideration some of the comments. So thank you for doing that, but I've got some more questions. So again, since we just got this last night and a lot of people are just seeing this for the first time. So up there now is west or east, which one is that?
The east side.
That's east.
East is a-
All right, I'll start with east. So east, I like the idea that you are going to retain the trees because we've talked about that and we want the trees. I have to mirror the idea of right where those trees are, where I asked for like a baseball field. And I know I've had people tell me we don't need fields, but I've had a hundred more people tell me we do need athletic fields. So I have the same question, why apartments? Because I know staff kind of recommended that for like a baseball field area. So my question would be why the apartments also. And then I think what Councilman Munder means for villas is the one level, first floor, master bedroom. So we've got a place for seniors to go. Because we're really running out of affordable place. When we have our senior citizens moving out of this town, that's travesty, number one. Number two, we have young adults, right, who can't, can't live in our town and they're moving to Frederick and they're going to these other areas, which by the way, Frederick County's blowing up. These kids who have grown up in our town, we need something affordable for them. So maybe something you could do there. But my, so back to east, I see that you did go from four hundred and seventy-three down to three hundred and forty-six. So I think we're trending in the right way. I still think, I agree with Councilman Munder, I think that's still too many houses. When you look at the number and you guys know that what's going on in this town, you look at your number, you look at green tree, we have to look at the big picture. It's a lot all at one time. Granted, it's not going in in the next year. However, now is where we can work with you to figure out what we need, what the town needs. So for east, I still think the density is a little high. You're going in the right direction. The open space did go up a little bit. So my question on that field by the church, where's the parking for that? I just, I'm concerned about where is the parking going to go? If we have youth teams coming and say that's a soccer field, we have a huge soccer program in this town. If you have ever been to a soccer tournament at Twin Ridge, cars everywhere. So is there parking for that?
There's parking right here, along it.
So that's just something I want you, please, if you guys would let us, because that's, we're doing this to let you guys hear this and we're hearing you and we're trying to speak for you. I don't want to lose some of my time. But I know that I can tell you from personal experience, I'm looking at that, mm, you might want to take off six homes across the street from that and add another parking lot by the trees. Because you're going to have parents coming with small kids, it's going to be hot. You've got that wooded area, and I don't know if that's open space across the street. Just something to consider, I'd like to see more parking. If I'm not going to get my sixty, ninety foot baseball diamond at the bottom where the apartments are, then I'll, I'll try to work with this. I need more parking up there. I'm just giving you a heads up because people like, people participate in this town. All right, and let me jump over to west. So on the west side, John, can you throw that up? You moved the municipal building, which staff recommended, we recommended. I have spoken to the chief for years because I've been working with him. And I know if we want that, is that our hopefully future police station? I know we need two acres for that. So I'm concerned that you went down on the acreage. I'm also concerned, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to the chief, I'm not positive whether that's a safety issue of all those houses, John, moved down. Rails to trails now, we had the station and then direct access for our police officers to get in rails to trails. Now I'm concerned about all that townhouses behind. And it looks like you've got six, six, six and eight. Is that correct? Because it says six on the plan, but I think it's an eight. Okay, so I'm concerned about all that housing back there behind. I'd have to talk with the chief, I might have more questions coming back about that being an issue. Because I know there's a lot of safety concerns around a police station, the back access, the side, the front, et cetera. So that's just a point I wanted to make on that one. Where are we, back on west? On west, I know staff had recommended, and I really liked the idea, if you could roll up, John, down where the Ridge Swim Club is. Staff had asked for, and I was really excited about, give us a few acres for a big multipurpose soccer lacrosse field that would kind of go up against the swim club area. We know we're not cutting that road through, but it would be, people could come from the pool, come around. So now I'm a little, I, I really would prefer that is the location, but I see you've now put more housing in there. So that's just my comment that I would really prefer to see that ball field there because we do have a huge population that goes to the pool. A lot of people belong to this pool, it's our only pool in town. If we could have a sports field there, I think it would be an easy thing for people, the connectivity, the walkability to get through from these other neighborhoods. I'd really like to have you explore going back to the facility down on the bottom there. And then, let's see. And it looks like your open space on that side, when I total it up, looking at your numbers, it looks like it went down a little bit. So I'm thinking that might be fixed if you go back to the ball field that staff, just look at it if you wouldn't mind. Because that will give us more space, lower the density. I still think there's way too many, you worked with numbers and you went up and down with numbers. But if I look on this side, it actually went up from the numbers. So you're kind of, I think you said, Carl hit on that, the density went up a little bit. So I'd, I'd rather have you look at the ball fields over there and look at some space.
One minute warning.
Okay, I see what you're doing, I'm going to take a couple of Councilman Munder's minutes, I'm kidding. I see what you're doing there and I think that's a great idea with the open area in the middle and then an open area there, and I get that. But as Councilman Munder said before, no one in this town sitting in this room can go use that open space if it's in their neighborhood. So I really would prefer more ball fields that convey to the town so we can say, we, we're going to have places for your kids to go. Because these kids right now, they're crammed in, they're crowded in, they're lucky if they get a practice time a week. I've just seen it, lived it, know it. So if you guys could really take that into consideration. And I like the way you're trending down, keep, keep coming down with that density. Did I make it?
Okay.
Yep.
Steve.
All right, thank you. I'll be, I'll try and be very specific and I'd like specific short answers, please. So what percentage of open space are you up to now for the entire development? What's your total percentage number?
Right now, we're showing a percentage, what did I say, nineteen? Well, we're, we're over twenty percent.
You're over twenty. So that's not nineteen acres, that's nineteen or twenty percent.
It's approximately twenty, if nine acres is ten percent, then nineteen acres is slightly over twenty percent.
Can you explain to me what this plan would look like with twenty-five percent open space? Is that achievable for you and tell me why it would not be?
The issue that we have in mixed use development, and again, it's kind of the common comments coming in here. But you all did a study called the downtown vision plan that stated that you needed sixty, one housing unit for every sixty square feet of commercial space. One housing unit for every fifteen square feet of residential. Right now, we're at thirty percent of what that target value is for the commercial we're showing. We can add more, consider, but then it pushes down, commercial, it pushes down what is truly then going to be mixed use development. So-
Okay.
And, and that's the balancing act that we're going through.
Thank you, I want to continue with my questions, I have limited time. I'll make a comment and then I'll ask a question. I said this at the first workshop, I state it again today. First, I want to, I want to, I want to say that I think on the west side, I am intrigued by the west side. I think you are designing it in a way that seems to mirror what's in our downtown vision plan. It looks, looks like you followed that as a model. So I think that is a good thing. The east side, I'm just telling you, it's just a glorified housing tract. There's still nothing unique, creative. It doesn't capture the design criteria, it does not capture the purpose and objectives out of our mixed use ordinance. All those things you rattled off in your slide, I could see a lot of it applying to the west. But the east side, to me, is a glorified housing tract. And you need more open space on that east side. Okay, another comment, and I want you to take this to heart, please, okay? I think everybody's getting tied up into the technical specifications. And you can meet technical specifications, but you're not meeting a creative intent of what mixed use is supposed to provide. So for example, on that east side, I will tell you what I would like to see. I would like to see a mix of single-family homes. Think about a Nottingham type of a single-family home. I would like to see some senior assisted living housing, much like we have at Wildwood. And I would like to see some entry-level homes for younger people, first-time home buyers. And I want to see it, now this is the important thing, Craig and Ron, this is important. You need to design the development in a way that creates this harmony and community. It captures what the mixed use criteria is asking for. In other words, not just clumps of homes, but how are you going to organize senior living, single-family homes with young families and kids and some millennials? Because you want it designed in a way that people interact with each other. Older folks see kids running around, millennials interact with seniors. And you have a, a park setting. You're missing the gathering spot on the east side. You've thrown in a ball field, you're giving us the classical cookie cutter development. I want to see an award-winning east side mixed use development. I want to see you learn from best practices in Maryland and across the nation. I want you to come and say, we've scoured all the mixed use developments and here are the best practices and here's how we've incorporated them into this design in terms of water features, arts, gathering spots, et cetera. That's what I'm looking for. And I'm looking for twenty-five percent open space. I think you can do it easily and you need some more open space on the west side. You're almost there, but you need more open space on the west side. Specific question. Ron, on the, the downtown vision plan, calls for a range of about eighty thousand to a hundred thousand square feet of retail office space. And then it calls out forty to sixty-five thousand grocery. In your plan, you're talking about a hundred and two thousand, eight hundred commercial. Can you break that down, is, is some of that, what part of that is office retail? What part of that is grocery? I want, I want to compare apples, apples to apples. And again, I want to give you a compliment because your west side, you followed the home, you know, range of this many single-family homes to this many. You're in the ballpark for all of those, so I commend you on that. So what's the, what's the grocery component?
We'll tell you that way early to give you hard percentages. But the large thirty-five thousand square foot building could be a grocery store. We, whether or not it ends up being that, again, it's all market-driven. I assumed for water calculations that restaurant use was thirty percent. Convenience, twenty percent. And retail, fifty percent.
Okay, my time is up. I want to ask each of you, have you heard what I've said and do you understand what I'm asking for? Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of statements and then direct questions. I do like that you moved the municipal building forward to Center Street. I think it's important that our police department has visibility. I do prefer the townhomes against rails to trails as opposed to commercial. I think aesthetically, when people are walking along rails to trails, it's nicer to have residential versus the commercial. My concern with Beck West is, and this question will also be included with Beck East, the commercial townhomes don't seem to have a lot of parking. Meaning, I'm assuming that the driveways into the homes are single, single-car driveways. Where, I think our average household is about two point seven five, maybe a little bit higher, but that's two cars. So, so where does the second car or guest park?
We have to park on townhomes, three, we, we don't have, we have to follow the parking rules. And for a townhome, we have to have three parking spaces, which would be one in the garage and two in the driveway.
So those driveways leading into the townhome will be two-car wide?
Two-car wide, might be tight, but two-car wide. And, you know, I've got twenty-five feet from street to-
And depending on, depending on what those products become, especially on, there's more room on the east side. Could have two-car garage towns as well. It could be a mix of both. But we will need to contemplate extra street parking for those townhomes.
So that's where I'm going, I mean, it, it's, it's great that mom and dad can park at their home, but when their mom and dad come or their brother and sister or their best friend come, where are they going to park?
Yes, it's definitely something that we have to address in the next phase.
Okay. Just know that I, I would expect to see something in the, in the next plan, at least an idea. I would hope that, especially in this drawing, the long street on the left side and then the horizontal street just in front of the townhomes at the very top, that that road would be wide enough for some sort of street parking. Is that, is that what you're planning?
Well, it should, it should be, I mean, it's the standard thirty-four feet wide, which is plenty for street parking along it.
Okay, and again, that goes for obviously the townhomes in the center of that drawing. Meaning, parking for, I, I understand that code says you have to provide three. But we have to somehow figure out how we're going to allow for guest parking.
Correct.
And, and that really is kind of, you know, aside from what everyone else is saying, Beck East as well, when you look at the townhome communities, there is nowhere for parking again. So that, that should be addressed moving forward. And then just for clarification, I know some of the citizens were concerned that Beck Drive would go through. In, in this concept, Beck Drive is a walking path, correct? Not, it is not connected?
It is connected.
It is connected, okay. Is, is there any way to avoid that or? Like, what, what does that do for the overall infrastructure? I'm just curious, meaning, like, what does that do for the traffic patterns?
We, we've connected it at this point in time. The comment coming back was that it should be shown as being connected.
Okay.
In the concept plan stage, not now. But if you're wanting to look at ways of traffic calming or discouraging speeding, there are techniques used throughout Maryland that can be used on Beck Drive that allow for emergency services while having people look at slowing down. But it's- But it's designed not to be a collector or high-volume street.
Okay. Um, I, Barney, I can talk to you on this side about that, because I believe you can offer some explanation. Um, and then, the last thing I want to say, throughout the whole property, whether it's east or west, um, I think there needs to be a strong focus on biking and walking trails, and I know that comes at a later stage. Um, but this community has needed that accessibility for a long time, and this is a fantastic opportunity to include it. So if we can put some focus on that as we go through this process, um, I would definitely like to see a lot of that. And that's it for me.
Okay, so for me, I'll just thank you for at least scaling this down a little bit. We're on the right path. Most of my questions have already been answered, but my main concern are these five wells. You have found, you say you've found five wells. Are they not in the same aquifer that our wells are in now?
No.
How do, how do we know that? How do you know that?
We use, we use a consultant that has done wells all over Mount Airy, and they, that's what they have told us. And then we had to submit all of our testing to MDE to confirm that.
Is there a possibility that MDA will come back and limit the amount of water? Because we are, so there's that possibility that they can limit. Then, if they limit it, we can only go as far as they tell us, correct?
Project will have to be scaled to available water.
Right, okay. I just, I just am concerned with those five wells. I don't want, I don't want it drawing down into other people's water, right now.
Correct, and that's what MDE is there for, right?
Okay. Um, that's all I have, thank you, because somebody already asked all my questions. Bill?
Well, virtually, most of mine have been answered as well. I, I want to compliment, uh, the council members and everyone who's spoken so far. Great, uh, great comments. And I want to, uh, I want to thank both of you gentlemen for the direction you've been taking this. You have been listening, and you've been responding, we appreciate that. How soon will you have a more finite understanding of the water capacity that is available through those wells?
Right now, when we did our, when we did our testing through the five wells, we had a max capacity of about 200,000 gallons. And the draw that we're showing here is around 105. So we feel comfortable that we are half of what the max could be. So, in the next stage, when we go to, um, concept plan, we would then do the next round of MDE testing.
But by far, the best news would be, it would, those wells would be pulling from a separate aquifer. That would be hugely valuable to know that.
There, there would have to be, for MDE, sufficient recharge area for it, along with, um, if there's a well in the area, that would be monitored. It's not just, they're rather specific, and the town actually requires longer testing of the wells than what MDE does.
I, I understand what you're getting at. I think that, I, what I can do is, I'll talk to our consultant. I can't speak intelligently enough on how to confirm the aquifers. I can get that information.
And, and I think in terms of the amount of recharge space that would be needed, and the extent to which that could come from unused area of the property would be useful as well. We talk about the, the municipal building area, and what's the square footage of that currently?
We're showing it at 13,000 square feet.
Okay. I want you to be aware that we need more than a new police station complex.
Well, that, that's actually why we showed it, so, when, in the last meeting, I believe we were told that the police station concept was about 6,000 square feet. So we showed 13 to give you an option in the future to expand to another municipal use in that spot.
One of the things I would like for you to investigate is the size of the best and most productive, uh, community centers in Maryland. We desperately are going to need a community center. We maxed out what, what's available at the senior center years ago, shortly after it was built during the 90s, when Mount Airy was the fastest-growing community in the state of Maryland. Uh, we don't have anything else to, for our seniors, we don't have anything for our youth. We desperately need, in our future, a community center. Just as much as we need a new police department. So we, we need to create the space for that, and we need to go forward with preliminary planning.
Is, is that something that, you have an idea on the amount of space that you need? You're looking for us to set aside space for it?
I'm saying, we could, we could do some due diligence ourselves, and years ago, there were some of us who made road trips out to Howard County and other places nearby for that, that very, very purpose. But if you have the opportunity, you know, and you're talking to some of your consultants, maybe you see what they, they recommend as ballpark. Okay, that's all for me.
Brian?
Thank you very much for, uh, coming back with this plan, guys, I appreciate it, and listening to the public. Everyone's answered my question so far. I have a couple of comments, though, in regards to the schools, for where the kid's gonna go to school, as the schools are already pretty. Is there a Carroll County code or law based on, you know, school, school classroom size opposed to development? Are you guys meeting that?
We have to meet, we have to pass their tests. They have a school capacity test, we have to pass that test, or else we cannot build.
Okay. The other thing is daycares, every one of those is full in town, pretty much. And is there any plan for daycare centers?
It could be, it's just something that, at this point, it's still early on, I can't commit to it without an end-user in hand, and I, no one would commit to building something at this stage in the process. But it's been something that's been brought up, and I think it's a great use, but it's like, I can't show it right now and say, "It's definitely gonna be built," because I'm so far out, I can't get a tenant to say, "Yes, I'm gonna go there."
Um, the other thing I had was just traffic in general, from, I mean, I know there's been a couple of comments from the public, especially folks on Beck Drive, about, you know, traffic being a problem, as it's already congested in town. And having, you know, another 180, 200 people leaving at the same time for work every day is gonna be kind of a mess for most people.
The next, the next phase of the project, once we get through pre-concept, concept plan requires detailed testing of the water to show that we have availability to match whatever's being finalized in the development. It also, there is a requirement that has to have a detailed traffic study done. The scope is approved by both the town and state highway. So, but again, that's in the concept plan stage that we look at that impact.
And again, it's a, a test that we have to pass, just like any project, schools, traffic, and water supply.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Can we make sure that everybody has their mic at least four inches away, not six, 12?
Martina, you have to have yours closer.
Is this okay?
That's perfect.
Okay. Um, thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. Has, have you guys thought of a two- or three-screen movie theater versus this huge grocery store space? Or something?
Again, so, so the grocery, we've heard, we've heard loud and clear that we don't need another grocery store. We've showed it as a placeholder for commercial space. We've labeled it a grocery store, because that is parking-intensive, and so we know that if it's not a grocery store, it can be something else easily. I didn't want to label it as something lower-intensity, and then get a tenant that's higher-intensive and not have the capacity to do it. So, from a water standpoint, a traffic standpoint, a, uh, parking standpoint, to label it as a grocery store gives us the leeway to change it to something else less intense later. I, I don't think it's gonna be a grocery. If it would, it, it would be a smaller, more boutique grocery, I would imagine.
Okay. And then, um, would you bring your water consultant to a meeting, so we can get specific answers in real time?
What I can do is, I know that a lot of the questions are aquifer steps. Let me see if I can put together something that I can actually send out, and that, um, kind of answers all of those questions. I can ask if he would attend, but I can at least put a summary together of the next steps, what we know so far, and then how that relates to the surrounding water supply.
Okay, and then, for electric car charging stations, are you seeing any need for that in the town? I mean, we have maybe two or three?
Uh, it's something that I haven't thought about at this point, but in the pattern book, in the next step in the concept plan, it's definitely something that we could discuss. I mean, we have the parking in those commercial facilities to accommodate that, but it's just something that, at, at this stage, we haven't talked about yet, but I'm not adverse to that.
Okay. Um, have you, have we figured out who's gonna be responsible for the open space yet? Is it the town, or is it an HOA?
I think it, I think it depends, so, I think that what the town is looking for, so we showed the soccer field, I think the town wants to take that soccer field and then maintain the soccer field and have control of it. The wooded buffers around the edges, I don't think you want to take control of that stuff there. So, I, I think it'd be a mishmash of, um, and again, that goes back to that developer's agreement that will lay out the sequencing, and then who's maintaining what, who's controlling what, and that can all be figured out in the developer's agreement during the conceptual plan.
Okay, and then, in our downtown, we do have apartments, can you, sorry. In, in the downtown, we do have apartments over the storefront, but I was just curious as to why you didn't factor in apartments maybe over the storefronts?
Right, so, that has been a, a request, and it's something that I have also requested of builders and developers, and I just keep getting the same answer, which is, they won't build it. After the experiences that they've had in Kentlands and Urbana, they won't build it. The combination of the costs and the, uh, the code entanglements of putting residential with commercial, they, uh, one of them had to hire a code specialist just to get through the building permit, and then even from there, they said, they either, they would never build it again, or it would have to be heavily, heavily subsidized by a municipality for them to do it again.
Okay, and then, I looked up some quick numbers about our population before we came here. And right now, the Census Bureau says that 33% in the 2020 estimates are 50 and over, and there's not senior housing on this plan. So, um, would you consider putting more senior, versus having crowded townhouses or apartments, having senior housing for our aging population who are moving away?
I'm not adverse to doing senior housing, but again, it's one of those items that, at this stage, I didn't, I don't have an end-user to walk in the door and say, "I've got a 120-bed assisted facility." I, I don't have that end-user to make that commitment. So, what I'm showing is just a number of units that, as we go to the next steps, if one of those, or two of those apartments became senior living, at, at least, you don't have to go back to pre-concept. At that point, you've already shown a building with parking, and it's a similar-style use, so you can make that transition. So that's, I, I'm not adverse to that, but I can't really commit to that in a pre-concept stage.
Okay. I think that's it, I'm good.
Steve?
Sure. Hi. Okay, I've had a few questions I wanted to go through. First, for project history, um, is this the largest project you guys have developed? Or planned to?
Close, yeah.
Okay. Have you ever done any other mixed-use developments?
Um, we've done not as much commercial as this, but we've had large residential and some commercial, but not, not, not at, not in a town center like this one.
Okay. I wanted to address the sidewalks, um, that I was trying to look at. Uh, a lot of mixed-use that I've looked at, sidewalks are usually very large. There's usually buyer retention, um, biking areas, and then towards the main center area, where you have a commercial area, usually even wider, because you have seating, outside seating. Um, I'm not seeing any of that, or is that a thought in the future?
Yeah, I mean, again, this is pre-conceptual, very basic, but in the pattern book, is when we get into architecture, and then, to your point, are you expanding the sidewalks when you're in front of storefrontage to accommodate walkers, bikers, outdoor seating, all of those things are things that we can address in the pattern book, and I, I understand what you mean. There's variable widths within the back of the community, you need a smaller sidewalk. Once you hit the main part of the community, next to the village green, you're gonna need a wider one. So that's definitely things that we can address during the, the, uh...
Along Center Street, we had 20, I was just showing 20-foot-wide sidewalks in front of the commercial area.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, I mean, this is a 1 to 100 scale plan, so.
Other thing, so with mixed-use, commercial's supposed to be very walkable and interruptible, and not through parking lots. Um, so I'm seeing a lot on this, um, the west side here, especially where you said the grocery store area, that's not continuous, you're walking across parking lots. So, I, I would like to see, I don't know if you want to make it a square or something like that, but if you're gonna do a commercial, it should all be walkable, they shouldn't, people shouldn't have to walk across parking lots, if they're coming from outside the community or in the community. I think that's one of the highlights of mixed-use, is being able to continuously walk through those locations. If you're walking through parking lots, it's a shopping center. So, that's a comment I had on that. In regards to that, the east side, since it doesn't have any commercial, how are the people from the east side gonna get to the west side, by walking or biking?
Well, this is something that we talked about in the first workshop, and that is the challenge, right? We have a crossing at 27, which will become a signalized intersection, so...
Is there thoughts of a bridge or something? Because there's nothing for them to get to.
That is definitely a possi, that, that is something that everyone would love, but financially is the, is the question, and that's a, that's a discussion with SHA to find out where they stand on it, would they allow it? If so, would they contribute to it? Because I think that's something that everyone would love to have. But financially, it's a far stretch.
But again, it's, it's a concern of mine, because you have a major highway.
Sure.
This is all supposed to be mixed development, but there's no mix on the east side. So, it's kind of, if you're on the west side, you have stuff, if you're on the east, you get nothing. So, it's just a thought I had. So, so mixed-use, like I said, is supposed to be walkable, community with housing, shopping, entertainment, recreation. That also draws visitors from outside the neighborhood. My, my thought is, I, where, it, it's not happening on the east side, because that doesn't exist, but on the west side, where do you see this being concentrated? Just on Center Street, or where's the main drag for you guys in this?
And that's what we're trying to achieve, and with that larger box, uh, store was, original thought was, all right, we need a draw, right? And you're not gonna be able to see the walkable shops that are along Center Street from 27. So we were trying to put some commercial that was closer to 27 to try to get that draw, and I understand, and that's, that's the, what you're talking about is the same, uh, kind of puzzle that we're trying to put together. How do you draw someone from 27? You put a box there to try to draw them, but then it kind of has a feel of a shopping center on that end, whereas the middle has a walkable feel, but the walkable area isn't close enough to be a draw visually. So, it's, that, that's, that's why we have it there, is we're trying to have some larger stores that will be a draw to those walkable stores.
Yeah, and, and another thing is the, um, the entertainment-recreation portion. I did like, there's an extra ball field. Um, this one park here looks interesting with, um, I don't know what's in there, but there's some hardscape. The, um, the, oh, the green, if it's just grass, is there thoughts of maybe an amphitheater or something else? Because grass isn't really, to me, just inviting entertainment or open space.
Sure, so, again, the, the village green, I just put some hardscape and grass to show that it's going to be a combination of that, and I think that it has potential through the pattern book...
And I think that it has potential through the pattern book to become like you're talking about, a place where you can have live music, events, whatever you want to add there.
Is there any thoughts to water features, splash pad, fountains in the middle of plaza for people to gather?
Not at this point, but.
For kids, because there's not a lot going on here for kids either, so, except for that one ball field. So the only other thing I really had was the municipal building. I know we wanted to move it forward. One thought I had is.
Thirty seconds.
Because there's talks of it being a police station, but we really need a rec center. It may not be the best location for it because you're trying to draw people in. You want something entertaining, exciting. You may want to put it on the east side or move it towards the side because a police station may also want a gated area for the cars. And that's going to be smack in the middle of your restaurants, entertainment. It's not really a draw.
Yeah, we patterned it off the pattern, off the downtown vision plan, which I think was based upon, what was it, Manchester and some of the other facilities.
Again, it's not a draw.
Time.
Leslie?
Yep, good evening. I'm going to follow up just so I don't forget about a couple of things. And I know you can't say, and I'm also only going to talk about, well, I'm going to probably talk about both, but the west side to me is what we should really be talking about because that's what's actually in the downtown vision plan. And the east side sort of just popped up after those ordinances got passed, making the west and the east side mixed-use. So as far as the, the commercial, and I know you can't know right now, but Steve, right? Sorry, so what Steve was saying, the art, some type of art, movie theater. We've been talking about this for longer, even since you've been coming to our meetings, Craig. Something could be a draw that isn't a chain store because if you have, if you have music, or if you have art, or if you have a movie theater, people can, people can know that without being next to a Target or, you know, some big box thing. So I think you might want to consider that because, again, that is part of what the mixed-use is. You know, we want these, we want an interesting place with a draw that's not, you know, it's not everywhere USA. You want, you want something that's more connected to your, what you are locally. And again, just going off of what Steve said, I don't think that any parking lot, even if it's at a grocery store, even if it's Safeway, they should all have walkways now with trees and landscaping because nobody, you know, wants to walk through a parking lot and certainly not in a mixed-use development. So just getting, you know, you've obviously gotten lots of feedback on the details of the west side. And, but I really think that, I really think that that's, well, let me go back to the east side. I'm, I, oh, I know, it was from Jason's first question, which I know you can't answer either. But even if it's going to be ten years, it really does seem like the west side should be the priority. And maybe they could even be separated and we could just, the council could be just voting on the west side because it's very overwhelming, as you can see from people, and even from us who I think were somewhat surprised. Even though I do appreciate the changes in the east side, do not, don't get me wrong about that. It's certainly better than it was. But I, there's a lot of, you know, it's, it's just, it's too much and it's not, it's not mixed-use. And it's just, there's a lot of problems associated with that east side. And I don't, I think you'd just get a lot more goodwill if you would, if you would focus on the west side. Now, I know there's concerns that people have about the west side, especially Beck. And I, you know, obviously that's going to have to be, to be dealt with. But I just, I just think it's something that you might want to think about in terms of, since this is going to be a ten-year-plus project, that you might want to think now about focusing on the west side. And I'll just say one more thing, which never makes me very popular. But I'm, I'm one person who agrees with apartments and both for the young people who, you know, everybody wants to stay here so they don't have to move out of town. But also because there are people already living in this community in Mount Airy who pay forty to fifty percent of their income in rent. And not that they'd be able to necessarily afford these places, but apartments are an important option for a lot of people who, for whatever reason, cannot or do not want to buy. And it could be the younger people who are not ready to become first-time homeowners. I mean, Brittany Manor years ago, when it finally got approved, it was going to be affordable, and it was going to be maybe three hundred and fifty thousand, and I think they're at six hundred plus. And the townhouses agreed to, are estimated to start at three fifty to four. So we know none of that is really affordable and what we think of as affordable. But, and so speaking of real affordable, well, actually even eighty percent AMI, which is probably teachers and firefighters and et cetera. Are you looking at any type of, you know, tax credits or something where you could actually have housing that people who work in this town but can't live here could, could afford in those apartments?
We're not looking at any subsidized housing yet right now. So I think that we're trying to, we're trying to create.
You know that that's also for teachers, teachers, teachers can't afford to live here. Well, yeah, not, not all of you. There's people who work for this town who can't afford to live here, just so you know. Oh, oh, let me make one more comment, by the way. I just want to be clear about one more thing. The town cannot, the government cannot tell a developer not to build apartments and not to build affordable housing because it would violate the Fair Housing Act, and they could be sued for lots of money, so, and your taxes would go up. So just also keep that in mind. Oh, you want to, I can send you, all you want to know if you want to, if you want to be educated is actually.
One minute.
One minute.
Please let her finish. I'm sorry, Leslie.
No, I mean, I, I practice law and I, I, you know, enforce the Fair Housing Act, so I actually am educated on the Fair Housing Act. Read the newspaper?
Hold on, Leslie, please. Give her a couple more minutes.
So Craig, sorry, what were you?
I'm sorry again.
Give her a couple more minutes.
Okay.
No, no, I was just, I interrupted Craig. He was going to respond.
No, I think that having housing choices is what we're striving for. And how do you get to affordable housing product mix? And there is a lot of towns, but we're kind of also figuring that there's going to be a lot of different towns. On the west side, a little more urban. On the west side, a combination of towns that can vary in size. So a lot of times we think about towns as twenties, twenty-fours, feet wide. But there's also a lot of products right now that are doing well in the sixteen, eighteen that are one and two bedrooms that are kind of a, it's almost that starter house. But that starter house in a single family doesn't exist in this area anymore, so it's taking on a new form. So I think that we'll see a lot of different products in those towns.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Larry, mayor?
All right, thank you, Roxanne. I just got a few comments to emphasize about the plan, and then I'll move into process because I'm a lot more concerned about the process that we're following. Obviously, I don't have a vote at the table on this, but I do have to answer all the citizens and represent them. And, and I'm happy to do that to make sure that we do have a fair process and make sure that the citizens are alerted to everything that is going on, everything that's coming up in meetings. And I know that some of that has gotten a little bit confusing over the last few months, so we're trying to do better at that. As far as the project itself goes, the first thing is if you could put an asterisk next to a pedestrian crossing of twenty-seven. I mean, if this is MXD all the way across twenty-seven, the people on the east side ought to be able to walk to the west side without getting hit by a car. So however, you're going to figure that out. It needs to be figured out. You can go over, you can go under. There's, there's opportunities there. But I think that's, that's a significant issue that needs to be addressed in the plan. I think Roxanne brought up the wells, and I've seen the well sites on here. And I mean, two of them are right on top of each other. So I know that you have, you have to figure out, you know, how, how much water you're going to be able to get out. And I saw the allocations up there on the one chart. And, you know, if you eliminate one well, then, you know, the density starts going down, which is, you know, to the people who are concerned about density, that's a good thing. But I just question that. I also question the town taking over those wells and having to manage five additional wells if that were to occur. Because that would be a burden on the town to keep all those functioning. I think that Councilwoman Galetti brought up the youth fields, and I'd emphasize it too. You know, if one-third of the residents that you're going to add into this town are going to be kids, and we're already in a field deficit for, you know, any youth sports, we got to have fields. And that's, that's been a frustration of mine since before I ran is that we have to have the open space to create those ball fields for our youth. And just on a side note only, because it came up recently, you know, just make sure that we have the adequate townhouse parking because anybody who's living in townhouses, there's a lot of landscapers, there's a lot of trailers involved, and we have to have adequate parking for those townhouses. Moving on to the process side of this, I believe at the beginning of the meeting, Roxanne, you indicated that there might be a public hearing. I know we talked about.
No, I said that we would be, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I said we'd be discussing the dates.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I didn't say that it would be.
Okay, so no, okay, yeah, public comment is fine. But I just want to make sure everybody understood we were not going to be having an intense discussion about this plan on Monday evening, just scheduling whatever the next step is. And I spoke up at a meeting before about the process and not anticipating things and then putting out letters and putting out notifications in anticipation of things that were coming along. For example, this plan, the council just saw it yesterday. The planning commission just saw it yesterday. And I would like, and I think it would be fair to everybody sitting at the table up here, as well as the citizens, that, you know, from this point going forward, it would be nice to have the plan in hand and then schedule the meeting. I, I think it's. So if indeed tonight is leading to another workshop, then I would like to get the plan, and then we'll set a date. And that'll give the public a chance to see it, and that'll give all of us a chance to study it as well. And it'd be nice to have it in electronic form because we didn't get that this time. And because of that, the citizens weren't able to see it until they showed up tonight. So I'd like to get an electronic version and the hard copies before we schedule whatever other meetings are coming up. Is there, is there any problem with that? Nope, okay. All right, so the other thing is we talked about a consultant at the last planning meeting. I was out flying, so I missed the meeting, but watched it. And, and so I, I just want to keep it in the forefront that, that we would like a consultant to take a look at whatever plan comes out eventually. When we come to something that everybody is pretty much agreeable with, at that point, I think it would be time to bring in a consultant, make sure that we're actually getting everything that, and thinking about everything that we need to in terms of getting the best development that we can. I appreciate all the adjustments that you've made tonight. I'm not sure where the council and the planning commission are planning to go forward with this, but I would encourage them to not schedule anything else until we physically have adjustments made to the plan and we have a hard copy on something. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sure there's other questions that the council and planning commission members have. So I'm just going to go back, start at the beginning, and like do three more minutes. Each person, if you have, if you have a question.
I'll try and pull something together, Roxanne. I noticed on the plan, just looking at it, and maybe Tom, unfortunately, he doesn't have access, but I believe code only allows for one drive-through within the mixed-use development. But I just noticed that there is two located in the plan on the west side in the commercial aspect of it. I'm, I'm not sure if that's just to show the potential or not, but that is concerning. I might be incorrect on the code on that also.
Can, can we have, I know, I know, I know it's hard. Can we just please allow us to have our questions answered?
Carl, if I can answer that, the code allows one drive-through up to fifty thousand square feet of commercial and a second drive-through above that amount.
Okay, thank you. I just, okay, now Roxanne, that's it. I am, just one other comment. I probably have other comments once I look at it more. But as the mayor said, we, most of us just saw this for the first time last night. So it's kind of, I did a quick overview and looked at it and went from there. But I do say there needs to be some adjustments made for, if there's going to be townhouses for parking and as he indicated, the trailers for landscapers and things of that nature. And the potential police station location should have less townhomes for security because I did talk with the chief once I saw this today, and he indicated that it is a potential security and still with a, with the townhomes and the residents behind it and close to it. Also, if there is a consideration of a community center in that area, it should be considered as a separate building or location, more for security, more so than anything else. It can be located in the same area as like, say, a government complex type, which they have in Western Howard County, but they should not be connected. So some adjustments should be made on that side also. But that's it, Roxanne. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn, do you have anything else?
Well, Councilman Munder, he and I kind of worked on some of those questions together. And I do want to clarify what Councilman Munder and the mayor are talking about. We have some issues with, so in our townhouses, if you've got somebody that drives a truck, commercial truck, or a truck with a landscape attached, they cannot park in those townhouse parking lots. They can't get there. They're having to park in streets in front of people's houses. So we're going to have, I think that's what they're talking about. We're going to have to really make sure there's adequate parking, as Councilmember Reed brought up and they brought up. If you're going to put those townhouses in, and same with the apartments, you're going to have to, I don't like the apartments, but you're going to have to have adequate parking. And I'm sure I'll have more questions at some point. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, gentlemen, just to reiterate my comments on the east side. And I know you're hearing a lot about ball fields and things like that, and we all have different views on what should be there. But again, to reiterate, the east side needs to have a mixed-use development feel, just like the west. So you need a public green, a public square, a public gathering spot on the east side, just like you have on the west side. And again, to my comments, it's not just a combination of single-family homes, townhouses, and apartments. You want the public square and the public green to be situated in a way that is a central gathering point for all those different residents, whether they're seniors, millennials, young families, with, with the appropriate pedestrian walkways and such. That's what the east side is missing, that feel. Okay, the next question specifically. Okay, the next question specifically, Mr. Thompson, do you have any experience, have you designed MXD developments before, either vertical or horizontal? Is this your first?
I have not done MXD developments. You'll find not many around. I've done commercial, I've done residential, adjacent to each other, but not as one development project.
Okay. One of the things that I noticed when I first started doing the research on this as a new council member, when I was looking at the MXD ordinance, and what I learned was, and I think you're learning, that MXD is, it's an art form, it's not a cookie cutter, it's a little bit of magic, it's, you have to have experience in doing this. So let me ask you, when you look at the pre-concept plans you're presenting to us, do you view these as award-winning plans? Like, do you look at this and say, man, we're knocking it out of the park, we're going to get an award for this?
I think that's an unfair question, and I won't answer it. This is town of Mount Airy, I'm not designing Gaithersburg or anything else on it.
Right, but again-
I think it's an unfair question for you to ask at this point in time. And I'll be honest, it's an unfair question for you to ask at this point in time.
Let me just make a statement, please. I on my own, as I'm sure the citizens have done their own research and looked at what award-winning MXD developments look like and what the features are, I'm hoping that you bring some of those concepts into our final pre-concept plan.
And I have been doing my research on MXD developments, not only in Maryland, but elsewhere.
Good. And this is why we need the consultant, and this is something that I've asked for, I went to the mayor and suggested we do this per the ordinance, and I'm glad the planning commission is following through with it. Thank you.
Pam?
So just a real quick comment. I agree with Carl and Lynn. We absolutely need a community center, but should not be connected to the police department. There's a lot of safety issues with that. So if we look at a community space, it would need to be separate. And whether that space ends up on Beck or somewhere else is undecided, but I am strong about that it should not be connected to the police department. And that's it for me.
Yeah, I just have one comment too about like, the people that are parking the large trucks and landscape vehicles, they generally don't park in the townhouse, there's other parking area for them. They don't park right at the townhouse, there's commercial areas for them, so. But, so there will be HOAs that would, you know, forbid that, but. Go, I'm done.
Just one brief question. Can you project the amount of time you need to further refine your designs? If so, we could, we know, we have some homework ourselves, we want to work on, we could be thinking about the next time to get together and share what we've come up with and see what y'all have as well.
I'm thinking it would take probably three to four weeks, at least.
At least. It's going to be, a lot of thought has to go into this now again.
But that's something we can get back to, once we've had a chance to digest this.
That's useful too, I mean, we need to look into the amount of time we need as well.
Right, and then two weeks, get it to us for two weeks, so we can put it in the thing, and then we'll schedule. But I do think we need some more tuning, some more, you know, fine tuning. Brian?
I have no questions.
Martina?
Did we ask a question about condos at one point, instead of apartments?
No one has brought that up, but again, there's no reason they could or could not be. It's shown as a-
Your housing act. Oh, okay.
It's a block, and so if one of them became a condo instead of an apartment, again, it's just, you don't have to go back to pre-concept. It could change throughout the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
Just real quick for me, I'd like to see more walkability, more ball fields, just more open space entertainment areas draw where people can be. And if Center Street's going to be the main, wow, this is it. I'd like to see that cleaned up a little bit. There's a big parking lot, I don't know why that's there, instead of having commercial frontage. And then if we're splitting up the, if the vision is to split up the police from maybe a community center, I'd rather see a community center somewhere in there and put the police station or space for it on the east side or somewhere else, because I don't think that's, again, what should be on the main center drag to bank control.
I asked that question last time, if we could put it on the other side, but I was told that they want it in that spot.
It's a terrible idea. I don't know who came up with that.
I think it was the chief of police.
It's a terrible idea.
Leslie, do you have anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Oh, okay.
Roxanne, can I kind of address some of the things that we've been talking about tonight?
Yeah, we're going to do a wrap-up, so you can start with your wrap-up.
I think that, as always, there's a lot of good input, but we're coming to this point where you're looking for less density, more open space, more amenities, of course. But we, the problem is that we meet an economic impasse, where the more I get rid of the residential, the economics don't work to support the project. So-
(applause)
It's fine, but to your point, Leslie, let's say you only did the west side, no one would ever develop the west side, Center Street would never be built, none of this, and nothing would be built, because there's not enough residential to support it. Add another ball field, add a community center, go to 25% open space, chop, 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 chop. At the end of it, it's a non-investable project that no one can build, the infrastructure cost is too high.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, you know, why does it take three weeks, why does it take four weeks, why did you take three of our comments, but not this comment? I'm trying to create a balancing act of a project that is economically feasible and goes to these things that you want to see in the plan. I want to see them in the plan, of course, I want to see a great plan. When we did this in 2017, we brought in the Eisen Group, who has done mixed use all over the country. They did a 43-page marketing study, they came up with the plan, and then after that, design concepts came in and did the downtown vision plan. Then we came in. I've been talking to every builder and developer in the area about this project. We are working hard to try to create the next generation of Main Street to Center Street and the next decades of a vibrant and economically viable downtown, but I'm just, I've been very honest this entire process, I'm not, I'm playing poker with my cards out. I'm telling you everything. I heard your comments, I put in the ball field. Why did I put the apartments on the other side? That was one of the comments, was, hey, can we get the apartments out of there and then over towards the shopping center? But also, I needed the density bump up, because the more I cut out, I went, I mean, I'm at, I'm supposed to be at 10% open space, and I'm at over 20, right? Because we wanted to save trees, we wanted to create open space, but without the units to economically support it, it doesn't work. So that is, that is kind of where we're, we have to temper some expectations. My personal feeling is, a ball field is a big addition. When you talk about a ball field right in the center of downtown on the west side, that is your prime commercial, high-density, putting people next to the commercial and to Main Street. You take out four acres for a ball field, and you've just switched those people to the other side of the road that we just said is harder to access. I don't like that idea, I don't, there is so much land in Mount Airy that over the next decade could be another ball field. I don't think that you take people out of the downtown next to the commerce that you're trying to, you're trying to revitalize Main Street. I don't think you take people out of there for a ball field. That's why I didn't do it, I put it on the other side, and I put it against Century, so that people weren't coming into the neighborhood and parking all over the neighborhood when we have these tournaments and so forth. I'm trying to meet the goals that you're setting out, but I have to balance that against the economic feasibility of all of this. And I've taken the notes of what you asked me. I can accommodate some of these things, but not all of them. And to make huge cuts is tough, and that goes to the, why is there, why is there a sea of townhouses? Because they are affordable, they can vary. You can go from luxury 24s down to 26s or 16s that are full, well, 18s. You can make a variety of mixes in there that people can get into. I was trying to promote more townhouses, because I didn't want to do a ton of multis. I know that multis are not as popular, so I'm trying, that's why, why is there so many townhouses? I was trying to pump more townhouses, because I need the numbers, I need the variety, without going to multis. So the more, every time I cut out another chunk, it's forcing me to go to a multi, which I don't want to do. So that's kind of, that is my thought process while I'm doing these designs. And, you know, creating open space that is usable, and then parking is tough. That space that I created, the Village Green, looks like a little chunk, but again, it's a hundred-scale plan, it's almost two acres. That could be half of that and still be the center of town, and then I could switch it to another part, but my point is, there's more chance of me switching around the puzzle pieces as opposed to just taking chunks out, if that makes sense.
Is there a place for comment at any point in this, or are we going to get a chance to wrap up?
Well, I was going to wrap it up myself. I think we've all kind of commented on what we wanted to do and-
Could I offer a quick comment?
Quick.
So Craig, I hear what you're saying, and just so you know, I mean, you're hearing from each of us, we each have our own little wish list, and they're not all aligning, right? So just for the record, I'm not looking for a ball field on the west side. I understand what the west side's supposed to try and be, so I'm not for that. On the east side, I'd rather have a community center, a community quad, a square, a gathering place than a soccer field myself. So, you know, we each have different wants and needs, and now you have to go back and figure out what, who you're going to listen to. But let me ask you this question, I'll try, I don't know how else to ask it, but you keep on using the phrase, "It's not economical." So like, what is, what is the number of individual dwelling units a developer is looking for for this size of acreage in order to make it economical? I mean, you must have a number of units that you design to, and you have some play and say, well, if I get between this and this, I'm going to make X percent profit, or it's at least feasible for me to continue, so.
The, I mean, at first, I just showed max density.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's, that was just-
Per the code.
I have to show max density and then shave out from there.
Yeah.
But you wanted to see something more realistic, this is more realistic. And it's somewhere in this range, because I tried hard to show everything that I could show right here.
Yeah.
I'm not saying, well, this is my next offer, I'll keep going. I'm showing what I think I can do here. And I, you know, we talked about other town centers throughout the area and all over the country, and they're a tough investment because of the length of time that you have to carry these through. You know, I've, we've all seen these huge projects that start and then stall, because there's a recession or something else, and then they start back up. So, and these, the main focus has always been to create an adjunct to Main Street, to continue Main Street.
Right.
That commercial center is not a moneymaker in any of the mixed uses that you see around the area. That is not what, that is a hopeful break-even, and then hope to make your money way, way, way down the line. So the residential is the generator that pushes all of it, and so that becomes the tough part, because the commercial and aesthetic downtown, that's the draw, okay? But it's a, it's a net zero or a net loss money-wise, investment-wise. So the residential plays two parts. Not only does it pay for the whole project and the infrastructure and everything we're talking about, and the commercial, but it also, you can't fill the commercial without the residential. So it, that is what makes it tough, is, you know, a lot of these places you see, especially the big ones, the urban ones, they're getting subsidies, tax breaks, all of these things, because they're trying to draw, so the municipalities, the counties, the state are subsidizing them. That is not happening here, and it can't happen here. So that's why the economic balance is so tight and gets to a point where there has to be an economic driver, and the economic driver is the residential. Now, you know, looking at your population statistics over the last 100 years, 1920, when Main Street's built, you're at 754 people.
Wow.
At 2020, you're at 9,654 people. Now, as you said, in the 90s, you jumped up significantly, I'm assuming through annexation of properties, right? So every decade, for the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, your population went up 34%, 24%, 35, 34%, 52% in the 90s, 72% in 2000. But from 2010 to 2020, your population went up 3.9%. Because you hit that point, right? The annexations had stopped, there's no new development. And so when we talk about adding this many houses, it is a lot, but if it's over the next decade, from 2020 to 2030, that 900 people, whatever, whatever that number comes out to be, is averaged out with 2010 to 2020, you're going to be at 10%, and you're on the same pace you've been for 100 years. But you're taking us, this project is taking the town, I'm looking long-term, the next decades, as this slowly gets really built out and then starts to connect to Main Street and becomes a cohesive unit. But again, the economic driver is the residential.
Okay, thank you. I've, I think I've heard everything I need to hear. Is everybody good? I'm going to close the workshop before I let everyone go. I just want to remind you, there is a town council meeting, June the 6th. Larry, you did say you would take comments, but not, not a lot of comments, or not spend a lot of time on comments of the Beck property, but you can comment during the citizens' comments of the town council meeting. I want to thank you all for being here and being so, just being very cooperative and patient and respectful for everyone that was here. Thank you, have a good evening and a good weekend.
What is our next step?
Come back with the- Come back with the-
I'm sorry, are you discussing a schedule of town council, or how are we doing the next steps?
I think you need to do the, another tweak of the concept, then when you get that done, give it to us, give it to us, and then we'll schedule.
And you want to do another workshop?
Yep, a continuation of the same workshop.
I wonder, I wonder if he's not aware. We got him with a calendar workshop.
We adjourn, Madam Chair? I guess we adjourn.